Back to order.
Yes.
What we're going to do now is go through a PowerPoint presentation to give the public an idea of what's in the proposed settlement agreement. And I'm going to start with some slides just on background for people who aren't as familiar as how we got to where we got to today. And then our attorney, Bobby Crescenzo, is going to walk us through the summary of the actual settlement itself. So in 2016, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts joined issued a joint clean energy RFP for renewable energy projects of 20 megawatts or greater. Deepwater Wind Solar Project cited in Simsbury was among those that was selected. Under Connecticut state law, projects that would generate more than one megawatt of energy are permitted through the Connecticut Siting Council and are not subject to local zoning and land use requirements. In June of 2017, the town secured party status with the Siting Council. Deepwater Wind held a public hearing in Simsbury. Interestingly, it was one year ago to this day, and the town actively participated in the Siting Council proceedings in November of 2017. On December 21st of 2017, the Connecticut Siting Council ruled that no certificate of environmental compatibility and public need is required for the project. And then this year, January 22nd, 2018, this Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to appeal the Siting Council's ruling in order to retain the right to appeal the decision at a later time if the town's concerns were not adequately addressed through the negotiations with Deepwater Wind. So from the very beginning, we've really talked about there being two primary things that are of interest. Number one, protecting public health and safety through the construction process and beyond. And the second is minimizing the impact to the neighboring community. And that involves also making sure the project looks good. So Bob will go into details of soil and water quality testing. But among the highlights from the settlement, there will be no development on parcel five, which is the most visible parcel south of Hoskins Road to traffic in that area. We'll talk about the agreement as far as screening is concerned, the decommissioning process, and then a guaranteed option to purchase the land once the project is no longer a solar farm. You know, one of the things that our attorney has shared with us really since the beginning of this, as the negotiations have progressed, we are poised to get a better outcome through this settlement than we would have gotten had we gone to court and appealed and even won that appeal. So I want to emphasize that in a lot of ways, calling this a settlement is a little bit of a misnomer. You know, we really feel that this is really the best outcome that we could get. So with that, Bob, can I ask you to step up to the mic?
Sure.
And walk us through?
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. I'll start where you left off. We did file an appeal of the decision of the Siting Council granting permission to build the solar array. And it was through that appeal, and we weren't the only ones who appealed. There were also, at the time, nine abutting property owners who also appealed. So the town of Simsbury is not the only plaintiff involved here. There are also now seven, two have dropped the case for different reasons. It's the town of Simsbury and seven abutting property owners that have carried forward with this appeal. And this is an administrative appeal of an agency determination. And under our laws, we have a very limited potential remedies, and the standard of review of an administrative decision like this is very high. In other words, it's a tall order to win these cases. And more importantly, when you win an administrative appeal, the likely outcome of that win is a remand to the administrative agency to fix whatever deficiency we were to find. And of course, you may recall that one of the deficiencies we called out is whether the old law or the new law applied. I won't get into that because it's not really material to tonight. But had we won on that issue, it would have been a remand to the Siting Council. DWW could have reapplied under the new law, gone through the new process, and been right back to where they started from before the Siting Council. So that would have been a win, but ultimately, it could have been a loss because we would not have been able to get some of the elements that we're going to talk about tonight. So what happened was, after the appeal, we began talking to DWW and with the abutters. And what we've, the process of that has resulted in this release and settlement agreement, which you now have, and if you approve it, it will be a public document. And it covers all the elements that we told them from day one were your bottom-line primary issues. Number one was public health and safety. If you could go back a slide, first and foremost was soil and water quality. And in the settlement agreement, DWW has agreed to a soil testing plan, which our LEP, Licensed Environmental Professional, has reviewed, and our environmental attorney in our office has it reviewed. And our environmental attorney recommends the plan as a very good plan for soil testing protocol. Water testing, I think we made a lot of progress. Originally, the plan was to test just the abutters' wells, if they had wells, for three constituents, three chemicals. And we said, that's not good enough. We don't know whether other wells will be affected. So we went back and forth on that. And ultimately, what's agreed to, and in this plan, is they have agreed to do a water testing plan or protocol survey according to DEEP protocols. And they will now test all wells within a 500-foot radius of the project. And they will test for not three constituents, but the six constituents that our LEP has recommended. They will do a pre-test and a post-test. They'll do a test before they begin construction, and they'll do a test after they complete construction. And according to ILAP, that's the standard protocol for this type of testing. We will get the results of that test, meaning the town of Simsbury. We will also have the ability in the settlement agreement to approve the tester. So when we get the results, and we'll have the well survey, whatever the test results come up with, the town of Simsbury, if it wants to, can take action through the Department of Public Health or DEEP, if necessary. We feel really good about the enhanced water quality testing because you have said since day one, that's your number-one issue. We communicated that to DWW, and we believe they responded in a very significant, material way in enhancing the water testing, water quality testing. Now, on the parcel five, they have agreed, we can go to the map, I think, they have agreed to eliminate any array south of Hoskins on the so-called parcel five, which is that area of land in the red box there on the amended plan. There will be no solar array on that property whatsoever. It will, they do retain the right to use it as a lay-down site during construction when they're doing the portion of the construction closest to that site. They have retained the right to do, you know, place the panels there and work off of that site. But they have to maintain a 100-foot perimeter around that house, and they have to put up construction fencing. When they're done with it, they have to take all that down and restore it to its current condition and maintain it as a natural meadow like it is today for the duration of the project, for the 25 years or whatever. Also, you mentioned that there is an agreement in the settlement agreement that grants the town of Simsbury an option to purchase the entirety of the site, all 285 acres, for $1, once the project is decommissioned, if the town chooses to purchase it. The town will have six months from the notice of decommissioning, enclosure of the site, to make a decision whether or not to purchase the site for $1. Now, that's incredibly important because, and that's going to happen some future years from now, but the Board of Selectmen at that time can decide to purchase the entire site, purchase a portion of the site, purchase the site, convey it to the land trust, purchase a site and let some of it be developed, whatever. It's unencumbered. There's no restrictions on that use of that land at all. It's just a straight option to purchase, which, again, we never would have gotten from the Siting Council because it's beyond their jurisdiction. So we consider that to be a major benefit to the town that is contained in the settlement agreement. Now, there's also a provision in here that allows the company to come back with, and this is a new provision, come back with an alternative methodology of building the array and make them articulated panels that basically follow the sun. And we were concerned about three issues on that. We were concerned about the visual impact of that. We were concerned about any noise that may make and whether that changed the glare characteristics of it. So what we settled on is that they agreed that any such change would have to stay within a 10% change on the noise characteristics and the glare characteristics. If it goes beyond 10%, then the town would reinvigorate its rights to appeal that to the Siting Councils, as would the abutters, on both glare and noise. You may recall that the noise standard that was approved, and I'm recalling from memory here, was about, the maximum noise was about 47 decibels. So if that were to increase by 4.7 decibels, the town at that time, if it chooses to, could contest that at the Siting Council level. And if the Siting Council did something the town didn't like, the town would retain its right to appeal that, not the whole thing, but just that decision. That's noise and glare. The 14, the increase in height also is a possible reopening of the appeal if, at the time, it proves to be unworkable. That's a relatively new one. They don't know, DWW does not know whether they're going to take advantage of the articulated panel or not, but this gives them the ability to go back to the Siting Council for modification on those three elements. I should tell you that on the 14-foot height of the panel, the abutters are still concerned about what that looks like, and there's more work to be done on that. And that's to come in the coming weeks. Any questions so far? I feel like I'm maybe going too fast here. I'm so familiar with all this, I don't want to go too fast, and people are seeing this for, the public is seeing this for the first time. I want to make sure we cover everything adequately. We also have a provision in the settlement agreement on the preservation of barns, historical And they also have agreed to investigate a 400-watt panel, which is a more powerful panel. If it's a more powerful panel, that means less panels. In a smaller site, there's no commitment to going to a 400-watt panel, but it's in here that they have to investigate it. Now, on the visual screening, we believe we've been able to achieve greatly enhanced visual screening, not around the full perimeter of the site, because in some areas, that really isn't necessary because there are already abutts, open space. But where it is most visible from the road and from the adjoining residences, we think we've got a much better screening plan. We don't have that big monolithic plastic fence anymore. We've got screening that has been reviewed by town staff, and I think, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, town staff is now happy with it. We don't have a 12-foot berm or 10-foot berm, but we do have a planted berm in the most visible areas with a berm, and then plantings above it, and plantings in front of it, and a nice cedar fence behind it. So visually, we think it's in pretty good shape. That is a depiction of the screening plan between the two barns. We paid a lot of attention to that, and I think we're at a point now where town staff is happy with it, and it's a great enhancement over what was originally planned. There's a visual depiction of the contour that, to the far left, shows a vehicle going down a roadway. And then, as you progress across the illustration from left to right, you see the planting in front of the berm, the planted berm, and most importantly, I guess, the distance between the public road and the panels. It's quite a distance. What is it, Mike?
Close to 200 feet.
Close to 200 feet off the road. And in that 200 feet is the planted berm. So we think visually, and the fence, which will draw the eye to the fence and the plantings rather than to the array, we think visually, it's going to, it's a pretty good screening plan. The top illustration is as planted, and I guess the bottom illustration is as things grow in. So as these plantings grow in, they'll become more and more effective. It's a natural look. It's not a, you know, something you'd see around an industrial park. It's a pretty good planting plan. Any other questions on the planting? Now, how this will work, this is very important to us, anyway. If the settlement agreement is signed, we're not going to withdraw the appeal yet. The sequencing is, if you approve the settlement agreement, and if we work out this 14-foot issue with the company and with the abutters and the town manager signs it, they have to develop and present the DNM plan to the Siting Council and incorporate all of the elements of the settlement agreement into the DNM plan. And once the Siting Council approves the DNM plan, then that DNM plan is what must be built. So that has to occur. What also has to occur is they have to take title to the land. Right now, they're operating under an option to purchase. So that's the second step. The third step is, they have to execute and record the town's option. So the option has to be recorded on the land records, the DNM plan has to be approved, and they have to show us that they actually own the land before we agree to withdraw our appeal under the settlement agreement. You should also know that once the settlement agreement is signed by all parties, it becomes a contract, that's an enforceable contract like every other contract. So we have an ongoing ability to make sure that all the promises they made will be kept. Now, I don't want to say that and have anyone believe that. I've come to think that DWW won't keep their promises. I do. They've been very good to deal with. But in the future, should they sell the company, or you know how things happen with these corporate entities, the town can rest assured that they have a binding contract, they have an approved DNM plan, and they have a recorded option to purchase the land for $1. So we recommend the settlement agreement as stated to you in the documents you have in front of you. We can tell you, as your counsel, that we believe that the settlement agreement has in it elements that would not be achievable through our litigation and is a benefit to the town of Simsbury.
Well, thank you, Bob. Is there, are there any other questions for Bob? I really appreciate your and your firm's very hard work on this over the last eight months or so and beyond. Thank you, Bob.
And I also want to state publicly that the abutters and the company and us, we all worked very cooperatively towards this result. We all had issues that we brought forward, and the abutters were delightful to deal with as co-parties to this. Very reasonable, sensible people that you should all feel proud of, your constituents. So anyway, any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Appreciate the work, Bob.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion?
I'll have to, I will say that I'm really pleased where this ended up. The issues that Bob outlined that were our concerns of the board, I think, have been very reasonably addressed. And I think we talked, and Bob had a number of conversations, and the town has with the abutters, so that their issues can be addressed as much as possible. And I'm really pleased with where we ended up.
Thanks, Mike. Is there anybody else who would like to add anything before we vote?
I agree with that. It's just well-done by everybody on town staff's side.
Do you allow any public input?
Not at this time, no. Okay. Let me make sure I have the right motion.
We have to.
Oh.
You might have to talk. Give me a kill some time.
Yeah, what should we do?
For Cheryl. Should she put her phone right here?
I thought of her nameplate.
Just for the public's understanding, Selectman Cook wanted to dial in for the vote. She's running the camera of the community for Caravan tonight.
Hi, Cheryl, how are you?
Hi.
Hi, we have you on speakerphone, and we are about to state the motion regarding the settlement agreement.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Cheryl. Okay, welcome. With that, is there a motion effective September 12th, 2018, to approve the settlement agreement as presented and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the agreement following final review and approval by the town attorney?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. There's one more motion. Is there a motion effective September 12th, 2018, to approve the option to purchase agreement as presented and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the agreement following final review and approval by the town attorney?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Great.
Thank you all very much. Cheryl, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Good luck with the event.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Before we close out this portion of the meeting, I just wanted to, you know, say my thank you. And I know this comes from all of us, to the town staff who worked so hard, Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Jeff Shea, Mike Litten, and all town staff who played a role in bringing us to where we're at. I also wanted to acknowledge the work that my predecessor, Lisa Hevner, did to get us to this point during the last six months of her term. She worked very diligently on this. I want to thank my fellow board members for working in a very cooperative atmosphere in bringing us to where we've gotten to. And finally, I wanted to thank Deepwater Wind for working with us. And I look forward to welcoming Deepwater Wind to Simsbury and this project that's really going to make our town a leader in renewable energy. Is there anything else that anyone else wanted to add before we adjourn from this meeting?
Some little while.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn from the special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we take five minutes before the next meeting?
Sure.
It's your meeting.
Is everybody here? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Let's call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each Board of Selectment meeting, we begin with public audience, so any member of the public can speak on any topic or topics if they wish to for up to five minutes. If anyone needs additional time, I can always stay after the meeting. Mr. Kalishman.
Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. Thank you for allowing me to address the Board. And I apologize, but I had no knowledge that this hearing, or whatever you call it, was going to take place. But I, and I noticed there's not anybody here from the neighborhood, and I don't see, for the record, I don't see the lawyer that represented the people that live in that area and took them to court. He's, they're not here either. And I'd just like to bring to the audience attention that I ran for first selectman. And let me assure you, and assure the people that live there, if I was elected first selectman, the attorney of Dykely and Spelacy would not be here presenting this so-called sham. It wouldn't be allowed because there's no benefit to that whatsoever. The water testing, we have an aquifer, and we're testing our water all the time. We have a water company, and I'm certain they're testing the water all the time. And they're testing for wells. What are they testing against? We have, we have water service, and I have water service, and most people that have a home have water service. And it's no inconvenience to switch from the well to water service. So that's a fallacy, too. Soil testing, that land that we're speaking of is laced and laced and laced with DDT. It's condemned. They can't grow anything on it. Just like I came by with my wife the other day, and I noticed these barns on Hot Meadow Street that face the, that are next to, well, they're next to Wagner, the old Wagner Ford Company, but they're across the street from a development, a marketing development, and they're putting in a McDonald's there. And I looked at those barns. And then I look at the people that are running the town. Those barns should have been condemned and torn down. And that's politics, too. And if I were the first selectman, they'd be torn down. And this thing, oh, you're going to keep it for history. That's a ruse. You're not going to keep it for history. What are you going to have, somebody coming here to look at the tobacco barns? What is it, the Roman Forum? 235 acres for $1. If the land is condemned and nobody wants it, who's going to buy it? So what we'll do is, the town will be the stiff. They'll take it back and do Griffin's dirty work. And you know, it gets me, because I study history, and I can't figure out, this land was given by the English king, the German king, as a land grant. And how it ended up with Griffin is beyond me. Outside, it was big tobacco money in those days. There's not tobacco money anymore. I apologize if I'm boring anybody here, but there's a few political ringers, and that's how they spent their life. The barns, open space. Now, you're talking about open space. How about the wildlife? How about the environment? We're going to just ignore them? You know, I'm a young guy. I was born in Connecticut. I can remember the world. There wasn't much wildlife. You couldn't find a deer, and you didn't go out and see geese like you see today, and you never saw a bear. And now we have this wonderful asset, and what are we doing with it? We're destroying it. No consideration has been made for the wildlife in those panels. What happens if you're a deer and you jump into it? And I'm going to conclude that, because what I came here for is this. I've attended the zoning board on three or four occasions, and I find that people that we hired to protect us in zoning, such as Ms. Newton, and people that we hired to practice in Newton, plus as the assistant that was here earlier, I don't see him now.
Five minutes, Mr. Kalishman.
Okay, time's up. But why are they legislating law? Why are they down at the zoning board? Why aren't they at their jobs? Why should they be making ordinances?
Thank you.
And I had a lot more to say, but unfortunately, we have time. But thank you for the time you allotted.
I'm glad to catch up with you afterwards if that would be helpful. Joan?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk to you and debate you at any time, sir.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. Recently, I requested under the Freedom of Information Act the reimbursements and final payments made to Pass Director of Planning and Community Development, Jamie Rabbit. A reimbursement request in the amount of $1,854.22 for travel expenses to attend the Congress of New Urbanism in Savannah, Georgia from May 15th to May 19th, 2018. However, food, parking, and hotel costs prior to the event were denied. Since the town is tax-exempt, state and local taxes were not reimbursed. There were denials due to lack of verification for car rental. There were requests for reimbursements from the Hilton Head, which is in the opposite direction from Savannah, Georgia. It appears that Jamie Rabbit used taxpayer funds to enhance It appears that Jamie Rabbit used taxpayer funds to enhance his travel expenditures through unverifiable expenditures, never thinking that anyone would question his travel expenditures. I would like to thank Town Manager Maria Capriola for taking the time to painstakingly review Jamie Rabbit's request for reimbursements and make employees accountable for their expenditures. As a professional town manager, Maria Capriola has lived up to my expectations of professional management of tax dollars. With the appointment of Mike Liddon as Jamie Rabbit's replacement, the town has a knowledgeable, well-qualified professional that can work well with the boards and commissions, the developers, and the residents. Recently, we experienced a travel nightmare on Route 167, Bushy Hill Road, as the Department of Transportation resurfaced the road for several weeks during the day with extensive traffic. Since the Chief of Police is the Public Safety Coordinator for the town, why was Nick Fulton not included in the preliminary discussions with the state? There was a choice between doing the work at night and, and with light traffic or during the day, leading to the night traffic nightmare. The choice between having noise during the day or night and choosing to work during the day was a bad decision. It appeared that many more people were affected during the day construction than would have been during the night. When the state decided to do the work during the day with increased traffic, the state did not foresee the need for detour signs, which would have diverted some of the traffic, some of the traffic. The pay, the planning for a significant project with a great impact to traffic was totally inept. Since these projects will be ongoing in the future, the town should be assured that all state projects in Simsbury will be completely vetted with the Chief of Police, Nick Fulton. According to documents obtained from the Department of Consumer Protection Liquor Control Commission, through an F O Y request, the Redstone Pub at 10 Jim Gallagher Way was fined $375 for a permit violation on April 24th, 2018. According to the Code Compliance Officer for the town, quote, "There were numerous complaints concerning unauthorized events in the parking lot at Redstone Pub located at 10 Jim Gallagher Way with consumption of alcohol beyond the limits of the approved liquor permit," end quote. The Code Compliance Office verified two occasions, August 15th, 2017, and October 14th, 2017, when these occurred. I would hope that the $375 fine imposed on the Redstone Pub would encourage the business to observe the rules and conduct its business with the appropriate permits. On August 24th, 2018, I was listening to my scanner and heard several medical calls called into the Simsbury Dispatch on a short, on a short amount of time. The dispatcher tried to access Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance with no response. The Granby and Canton Volunteer Ambulance could not respond to the call and several other towns were called with no results. After about a half hour after the first call for medical attention, the dispatcher called AMR, a private ambulance business. They accepted the call. This is not the first time the dispatchers had problems with assessing volunteers for ambulances. Since volunteers are in short supply for all organizations, it's time that Simsbury Board of Selectmen bring the AMR organization to describe the business plan. Avon uses AMR for their medical calls without any issues and they are self-sufficient and do not ask the town for money. The only requirements that AMR requires from the town is to supply a building. The building used by the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association is a perfect fit. The town hall parking lot has an electric charging station at the entrance. The town received $10,000 for the implementation of a charging station. We were told that once the money was spent, the town would set a fee for the use of the electricity. The taxpayers of Simsbury should not be subsidizing anyone with high-end electric cars. Money that was not appropriated for the solar farm. How much money was spent and where the expenditure was reflected? The solar farms appear to be changing the site plan from stationary panels to movable panels to absorb more energy from the sun. Is this a material change in the project? And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum Topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Joan. Anyone else want to speak in public audience tonight?
Why not? You don't mind?
Absolutely.
Hi, Mark Lebatkin, 107 East Wheaton Street, Simsbury. I don't often get to come to these meetings because I'm usually working. I have, I had three things. I have a fourth. I just want to clarify something, there were not multiple complaints, it was just you, Joan, and you, Robert. Just so everyone here is clear.
I object to you pointing that out.
Why?
Please address the board, sir.
Sorry. So, just saying though, there are only two complainants and they're sitting here. So the first thing I want to do-
Excuse me. Please, please, Mr. Kalishman.
Out of order.
Please.
The first thing, I'd like to thank Maria for the first time in five years fixing the Google Maps so that Jim Gallagher Way actually shows up. I don't know how you did it, but you did it. So we have not had Jim Gallagher Way on Google Map or any of the other maps for almost five years since we changed the name. Thank you very much.
And thank you to Mike. Mike was a big part of that.
Second, East Wheaton Street got repaved and redone with stone. It looks fabulous. I live on the street. The Public Works Department that did this work did a fabulous job and I want to thank them. The third thing is, we had some challenges with the traffic recently. I made a call to the police station, I spoke with a couple of officers there. They had officers out in five minutes to help with the traffic. So again, our police department did an extraordinary job of serving the public interest and I'm just so happy we have such a strong department in this town. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And I want to, no, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else here that'd like to speak in public audience?
I just want to address the board and thank you all for allowing scouts from 676 to come here, so I'm representing them as assistant scout master. The boys are working on both communication and citizenship in the community, so thank the board for allowing them to sit in here today. We'll stay about an hour or so.
Okay, absolutely and welcome. Thank you for being here. Is there anybody else I'm missing for public audience before we move on? Okay. So we have one presentation tonight and it's a presentation by the Tourism Committee. Just want to give a little bit of context. Earlier in the year, I was having coffee with Joe Buddha, who's the Chair of Tourism, and he was, you know, explaining to me a desire from the committee to have greater direction from the Board of Selectmen. And I kind of flipped it around and I said, you know, I'd appreciate it if you were to come to us as a committee and say, you know, what's your vision for tourism and, and what are some items that you think that you should be working on? So what we're going to see tonight is a short presentation that's divided into three sections. One, that's looking at some recommendations for the next 12 months, recommendations in line with the 350th celebration, and then some longer-term, more strategic things. So no action needed on the part of the board tonight, but I actually thought that this would, the timing would be nice because we're going to be having a conversation in about two weeks about economic development priorities and the new Economic Development Commission. And I think that this will get us thinking for sure about tourism, how tourism fits into that and some things that our Tourism Committee should be working on. So with that, we've got Joe Buddha and Dominique Avery, he'll be presenting.
Thank you very much, Eric, for that overview. I'm Joe Buddha, 6th Appleton, Simsbury, Connecticut. And we'd like to just give you that brief overview. Since the time of the conversations with Eric, we had an opportunity to work as a team to really do a deep dive, as it were, on different activities that could be done through the town to enhance tourism and that's really our focus. If we go to the first slide, we look at the mission of the Tourism Committee and that is to help facilitate efforts towards enhancing the vitality and broadening the economic base of Simsbury through the development and promotion of tourism. So it's, it's really, we're not to take direct action as a committee and we're to give, facilitate, and give recommendations. One of the things the team looked at was to draft a possible vision statement and we looked at saying that make Simsbury a town for all seasons. That includes creating town-wide events throughout the year while establishing the town as a tourist hub for the Farmington Valley and a destination point for European travelers landing at Bradley Airport, which I think is a viable option for us, knowing that we're really seen as, by, by tourism groups that come into town as what they call an authentic New England town. And I believe we are that and I think that's a great representation for us and description. The next slide, we gave, we looked at recommendations over a 12-month period, period, and those were to establish a vision statement for the Tourism Committee that serves as a guide for the town's tourism strategy as a key part of economic development. And again, it goes back to the economic development team themselves and working with them to build that strategy. We gave a draft vision, but what would that look like and something the town could act on. Provide recommendations to the Economic Development Commission of business that attracts tourists. Everything from fishing supplies, we had tube rentals, kayaking, campgrounds, whatever that may be, that really attracts tourists to our town. The establish cohesive signage throughout town with complimentary website. I think Dominique was instrumental in putting together the cell phone tour that we had in town that was a Main Street area, as you know, and that, the funding stopped for that. Was it last year, I think it was? Last year, funding stopped for that. And so we no longer have that. We have the maps, some left that we're passing out that are there and we're crossing out the cell phone part, but the point is that that's no longer funded. But I think we have an opportunity now to look at current advances in technology with a web-based locations that could be occurring that was with a map. So we see that being something that can be done at a very cost-effective level. I created downtown hike brochure. We came up with an idea that said, well, you do your hikes in the woods, why can't you do an urban hike within the town of Simsbury that we could actually map the miles? That would say .5 miles, you could go from the library to Point B, to the Historical Society or the Town Hall. In further, three miles, you could go all the way to North Village. So we could make that creatively a map that would be available to people at a very cost of, again, with stops, points of interest, stops along the way. Finally, develop strategies to encourage the Hoobline Tower hikers to visit Simsbury. This was brought up by a number of the committee members and others that many, hundreds of thousands of people visit the Hoobline Tower, but we really, I don't think, get that tourism flow going into the town itself. So do we have an opportunity to promote Simsbury on a location adjacent to the hiking paths at the Hoobline Tower?
Do you have anything to add to this right now?
Oh, I'm just a gentleman. I thought you should be so quiet, but I don't-
I know, we're just not feeling great. That's right.
And Joe, can I just add something for context purposes? Some of these items, you know, are within the Tourism Committee's purview. Some of these will, you know, would cost money, they would need to be budgeted, and then some of these items, town staff would need to assist with. This is very preliminary, but I think as, as we're talking about economic development priorities over the next 12 months, at our September 24th meeting, identifying, you know, a subset of these that we think that you should flesh out further would be the next step.
Correct. That would be perfect. And recommendations for the Simsbury 350th, as we all know, in 2020 will be the town's 350th celebration. And we're looking at certain activities, but also infrastructure possibly that could be put in place and recommendations made, such as incorporate a visitor's information infrastructure into the Betty Hudson Park. I think it's a great location by the Flower Bridge and the infrastructure that's there that if we could possibly have an information hut or a little building there as well as brochures, it's an easy place for people to park. It would be a low-cost activity, you know, to put that at such a location, to use, leverage that location that we have there. Secondly, develop a passport to Simsbury, a booklet that contains the 350th events, the maps, the funding through advertisement could occur. The town of Kent did an outstanding job on this. I think I gave Eric a copy of this. And it's a small brochure I could leave with the, the group to look at, but it really gives maps. They actually have it then customized that the schools in town, the Kent schools, customize these for their students as well as their visitors. So it's customizable to the schools in our town. So it's a very clever design that we looked at and we benchmarked that early on this year. And then the, finally, the identify a series of seasonal street fairs, including the winter, as we said before, town for all seasons is what we could see as one of our themes and that attracts people from out of town. Through the 350th, we actually had meetings this morning. Steve Antonio is the, the Chair of the 350 Committee and we had meetings with Missy at the PAC to talk about possible events that could be held at the Performing Arts Center this morning. So we're exploring that already. There's a team that's very active at this time already focusing on the 350. So those are just a few of the activities. Long-term, when we're looking at the long-term, we see the support, the creation of a multi-year plan that promotes tourism-related economic development in Terriffill. We think that there's a great opportunity with the river, with the location itself, to really become an outdoor hub in the area for Simsbury with shops, restaurants, even further than what we have now, enhancements to the, the Terriffill Park itself and other areas there that could be enhanced and that could really be a tourist destination. We, we're very excited about that possibly and even some preliminary discussions with the, the association groups of Terriffill. They're all so excited about possibilities that could exist there. Then the second would be to, at each hamlet throughout Simsbury, West Simsbury, Wheaton and others, identify one tourist draw. So we would have them focus on an activity, I mean, a destination point, as we call it, that could be possibly put in place in each location. And then finally, identify a location for a campground possibly to improve access to the Farmington River also. So is there that possibility to have visitors come camp, perhaps their platform tents available to visitors that could be accessible to everyone? Okay, and so those are our recommendations at this time. Again, these were just the preliminary ones. We actually have more in detail too, that's always available from the committee. Any questions or do you want to open up the question?
Absolutely. Are there any questions?
I just wanted to add one thing. The Tourism Committee has been in existence since 1984 and has functioned really sort of on its own. Funding has come through when there has been funding, basically the Economic Development Commission, and we've gotten no guidance. It was formed in 1994 by Anita Mueller and at one point there it was 20 people on it. Now we're down to 10, but we've seen ourselves as a facilitator, but it's become increasingly clear that our outdoor recreation possibilities are important to the town. Peter Fairweather said that in 2013, I think, or 14. He said, "We should be taking advantage of that." And because we don't have one big economic driver like Mohegan Sun or Mystic, any of the things that are on the shoreline with Mystic or, like compounds, it's all been done sort of ad hoc by, so much has been done by volunteers. If you see what has happened here since then, the, the beverage of flowers, the summer home of the Hartford Symphony, Simsbury Meadows, all of these things have been done by volunteers. It's, it's, it needs help, it needs direction in order for us to go further and that's why we're here and that's why we've turned to you and that's why we talked to Eric in the beginning. So, that's my two cents.
Well said. Are there any questions anyone has?
We appreciate you putting this together. So obviously, we'll, the more information that you reference, we'll get that as we talk through the budget process and how we fund priorities and, and look to provide that direction.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll make a comment, interesting comment just you touched on. For the scouts here, it's interesting when we think about tourism, we think those, I myself would think of those big, grand destinations, but the Art Walk this summer is a great example of tourism. It is whether or not you saw it or not indirectly, those people coming to town who may have not been to town before, who stopped and bought a sandwich someplace, who spent some time, who talked about it. It's an example of tourism. I have to think, I have to retrain myself to think in that manner. And just to put your point about Europeans coming here, I spent indirectly ironically this past weekend, I spent time with a gentleman who's dropping his son off at Westminster. They're from Germany. Probably to the son's, he had never seen the school, unfortunately, his parents were just dropping off. But his parents chose Westminster because the area reminded them of home. And he made that direct correlation, was the ridge, Hoobline Tower, the foliage, rolling hills. And he said he felt very welcoming, welcomed in the town and he'd spent time here with his wife a few months back, so.
That's excellent.
Well, if we, we don't need bigger advertisement than Maria's decision to take the job here.
What an evening for Maria.
What an evening for Maria.
Yes.
She's retired now.
If you mentioned that, we'd have gotten the report yet. 2018, you have to.
I just have one question. I think this is, you know, really well-stated. I know it's inherent within the constituencies that you're talking about, but we have had a fair amount of discussion of how attractive Simsbury can be to seniors. And the Aging and Disability Commission is looking at an AARP designation, which would be a pretty significant recognition of Simsbury. Have you, I didn't see that specific constituency within here. Have you talked about them specifically, or?
Not really directly. I think we saw it more in all-encompassing as an overview, but knowing that, you know, the ADA and all the other accessibility to locations are a critical factor. I mean, we talk about that even in the park settings and there are different locations throughout the town. And I think we need to be more aware of that, you know, at all our locations and all our businesses. I think that could be a very good attraction. And even having a baseline by the, you know, with the AARP group could be something interesting for us going forward. Excellent.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you so much for putting this together.
Thanks a lot. Good job.
We're going to move on now to the First Selectmen's Report. So I'm going to recap something that happened just a few minutes ago. The Board of Selectmen held a special meeting where we approved a settlement agreement with Deepwater Wind. That's the company that's applied to build a 26-megawatt solar farm on the north side of Simsbury. I'm just going to give a brief update tonight. A more in-depth update in the version of this report will be going out by email tomorrow. The Board of Selectmen emphasized throughout the process that our number-one goal is ensuring public health and safety. The settlement agreement outlines a soil management plan, a water testing plan that's been reviewed and approved by our environmental consultant. Our second goal is reducing the impact to neighbors. Deepwater Wind has agreed not to construct solar panels on the parcel south of Hoskins Road that would have been most visible to traffic. They also have agreed to a visual screening plan that includes native plantings, berms, among other things that fit with the natural character of the area. So either later tonight or early tomorrow, we'll be posting a full settlement agreement to the town website along with a summary PowerPoint that we showed earlier. And if you go to the First Selectmen's page, there's a link on the left-hand side that says Deepwater Wind Solar Information, where all of that stuff is housed. At our August meeting, the Board of Selectmen unanimously adopted an ordinance creating a new Economic Development Commission. Since that time, we've received more than 15 applications, and Selectwoman Cheryl Cook and I have been conducting interviews. I thank everyone who's applied to serve our town in that capacity, and we anticipate having the new EDC appointed at our October 10 meeting. If you have not applied yet and are watching this, it's not too late to still apply. Earlier this summer, the town's zoning enforcement officer sent a letter to property owners in Simsbury who post their homes on short-term rental websites like Airbnb to inform them that the use is not permitted by our current zoning regulations. Since then, the Zoning Commission has asked staff to develop a draft regulation that would regulate short-term rentals from a zoning perspective. The draft will be shared at the Zoning Commission's September 17 meeting. Public comment will not be allowed at that meeting, but will be scheduled at a future date should the Zoning Commission choose to move forward with short-term rentals. Eno Hall has been under construction this summer. We're planning to host an open house, October 2, from 9:30 to 11:00, giving everyone the opportunity to see the updates, which include the kitchen, the restrooms, and improved soundproofing in the main auditorium. Some items to mark your calendar. Concert on the Green is a free concert series co-sponsored by the Simsbury Grange and the Simsbury Historical Society. The next concert on the green is September 15. That's this Saturday at the Simsbury Historical Society from 5:30 to 7:30. September 15 is the date of the Simsbury Grange Agricultural Fair from 10:00 to 3:00 at the Grange property, 236 Farm Village Road. Senator Whitkows is co-sponsoring an informational forum on sports gambling. The panel will include online sports betting experts with an opportunity for the public to ask questions. That's coming up Monday, October 1, from 7:00 to 8:30 at Eno Hall. And Saturday, October 27, from noon to 5:00 at Simsbury Meadows. The Simsbury Chamber of Commerce presents its annual Chili Challenge. Admission is $10 for anyone older than 11. Lastly, stay connected. You can sign up for email updates from the town so you always know what's going on. On the homepage of the town website, there's a big button that says Subscribe to News, and you can specify exactly what news you want to get. So you're getting just what you want to see. Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Under Board of Selectmen Business, I would like to add one item to the agenda this evening. We received a very recent request from Trinity Church to hold their annual Terrifil Fall Festival on September 23. They would like to hold that event on the Terrifil Green. Because of that, a public gathering permit would be required. And unfortunately, this board will not meet again until the day after that event. So I want to thank Robin Newton for her very hard work today in trying to wrap everything up that would be needed for the public gathering permit. So I have hard copies here for everyone. We will add this material online, so the public will be able to see that, but would respectfully request that we add public gathering permit 2018 Terrifil Fall Festival with Trinity Church to the agenda this evening. Just a reminder that the Board of Selectmen Goal Setting Session will be coming up at the end of this month on Saturday, September 29, from about 9:00 AM to noon. Mike Liddon has agreed to help me facilitate that session. We're beginning to plan for that, and I'm looking forward to that session with you all. We were able to secure the program room, that's the large program room at the Simsbury Public Library. I think that space will be a little more conducive to, again, facilitating that and having just a good conversation around your goals. A reminder that tomorrow evening, we have the CERC Economic Development Workshop that is going to be held from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the library, the large program room. As just as a reminder, we had invited a number of our local land use bodies and some of our other committees. We're expecting about 20 to 25 attendees, and a light dinner will be provided. And so for those of you that are able to make it, again, I'm looking forward to this session in particular. I think it will help frame our conversations around what this group would like for the Economic Development Commission to do moving forward. I think that this will be a great setup for that conversation. Also, time permitting this evening, I know it's been a long evening for you since we started early, but if we do have time, following adjournment of the meeting, I would like to have a brief update with you regarding collective bargaining with our Police Officers' Union. We are about to enter into the pension side of negotiation. So we have a little bit of an unusual setup here, and the pension benefits are actually in a separate collective bargaining agreement with that particular union. So again, if we have time permitting tonight, I'd just like an opportunity to briefly update you on that as well. For departmental news and notes, Culture, Parks and Recreation, you may recall from early in the summer that we are going to be doing a natural gas line conversion project at Simsbury Farms. We do anticipate that long-term we will have some energy costs that will go down as a result of that project. That is going to be getting kicked off very soon. And again, we're expecting that to take about three to four weeks. So really, no change in the timeframe, but just wanted to remind you that that project is going to be underway very soon. From our Police Department, two members of our Police Department were recently promoted to Sergeant. We had a swearing-in ceremony for them on August 20. Sergeants Bob Sewell and John Durkin were very longtime members of our department, and they have retired. Patrol Officer First Class Scott Sagan was promoted. Most recently, he had been serving as a detective for the last eight years, and he's been with the department for 17 years. Jason Trombley was also promoted. He has been with the department for 10 years and was also serving in the Detective Division. Very proud of them both. They participated in a highly competitive process. I want to congratulate them both on their promotions. For our Planning and Development Department, FEMA has reached out to us, and they are going to be conducting updates to our flood insurance rate map for the Farmington River watershed. So there is a discovery meeting that will be held at the end of this month, and our Town Engineer Jeff Shea and Mike Liddon will be representing us at that meeting. Also, for the Planning Department, we will be having Christine Campasano come on board starting next week. We've had a vacancy for a part-time land use clerk in that department. Our former incumbent in that position was promoted and now has a full-time position within the organization. We're quite excited about this appointment. We really are very fortunate that Ms. Campasano has so much land use experience. She worked for the town of West Hartford for quite some time in the land use and zoning capacity, as currently working with the town of Avon, and will be joining our team. So we're excited to have her on board. From Public Works, the Simsbury Bicycle Friendly Community Application Process. As part of that, we are conducting a survey of Simsbury residents and area cyclists. We do have information on the town's homepage under News and Announcements regarding that survey, and would encourage our residents and local cyclists to participate in that survey for us. Also, from Public Works, Public Works and the library and our Parks and Recreation Department are holding a joint event on October 6. It's a touch-of-truck event. It's going to be held at Boy Scout Hall from 9:30 to noon, again, on October 6. Kids and families are welcome. They're encouraged to attend the event, and they'll have an opportunity to better see the various heavy equipment that's used to maintain our infrastructure. Also, from Public Works, the installation of the solar array on the Public Works garage will be occurring later this month and completed this fall. Again, this project will also reduce our energy costs. And we are working still to finalize the contract for the solar array that would be installed at the ice rink at Simsbury Farms. And we do not have an installation date at this point, but again, are working to finalize the contract, and then we'll move forward from that point. For Social Services, we are wrapping up our Renters Rebate Program. The deadline for applications is Monday, October 1. So folks who qualify for that program, just again, a reminder, encourage you to reach out to Social Services. They can assist with the application process if needed, but just to make sure to get those in. The Energy Assistance Program, that opens up on October 1. So again, the number for Social Services is there. Please, you know, feel free to contact them for updated guidelines and to make an appointment. For Special Events, we have a Wellness Fair that will be occurring. This is a multi-generational Wellness Fair from 10:00 AM to noon on Thursday, September 27. That will occur at the Public Library. We have a number of our community partners who will be participating in that event. The event is free, and it's open to the public. Lastly, we have a Freedom of Information Act training session. Town employees, board, committee, commission members are invited to attend and participate. It will be held on Monday, October 29, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM in the Simsbury Public Library. The session will be presented by Tom Hennig. He is the Public Information Officer at the Freedom of Information Commission. He is just a terrific resource. And this will be essentially a nuts-and-bolt session, so it'll be really geared toward things that are relevant, again, to our employees and our Boarding Committee members, so things around holding public meetings, agendas, minutes, record-keeping, things of that nature. And he always leaves time at the end of the meeting for questions. And again, we would encourage our employees and officials to attend that. We are just trying to get a bit of a head count for that session to make sure we have enough seating, supplies, et cetera. So if you are planning to attend, if you could RSVP to my graduate student intern, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Maria. Is there a motion to add discussion and possible action on the proposed public gathering permit for the Terrifil Fall Festival? Under Selectmen Action, it would be the new item E.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? Okay, we'll add that. So moving on to Selectmen Actions, Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective September 12, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $21,716.38, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? And that passes unanimously. Item B is the proposed Eagle Scout project. This would be at Simsbury Farms Ice Rink, and it requires the Board of Selectmen's acceptance of the donation for it to move forward. I'll introduce Talen Perdue, who'll give us a little bit of information about what the project's all about and what you're thinking of building.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Talen Perdue, and I'm a life scout going for Eagle from Troop 175 in Simsbury. The Eagle Scout project I would like to do is renovate in the scorer's box in the mats around the warm room at Simsbury Farms Ice Rink. I found this project by contacting the Park and Rec Department and Mr. Tversky, who works there, and requested if there were any projects involved with ice skating, since I've been playing hockey and ice skating since the age of seven, and I still ice skate and play hockey for the high school team. Yeah, so Mr. Tversky came back to me with an amazing idea, which was renovate in the scorer's box at Simsbury Farms. And I was real excited when I heard about this, because since I became a life scout, my goal for my Eagle project was to do something with hockey, since I really love it as a sport. So I was really happy to accept it. The way I plan on fundraising for this project would be doing car washes, bake sales, and returning cans, as well as accepting donations. And the people involved with the project would be my family troop and Mr. Tversky. What I'm specifically doing for the scorer's box is insulating it with insulation, put in a new heater, put in a cabinet with shelves for storage, put in plexiglass and pressure-treated wood for the ceiling, and put in a light in on top, so there's more light during the night games and such. On top of this, I'll be putting in new mats around the warm rooms, since the mats there right now are loose and separated, so usually skates go in and light can be damaged, and then people can trip and stuff. So this will prevent tripping, and people running their skates in the cracks.
Sounds like a great project. Thank you. Are there any questions anyone has?
No, appreciate you doing this.
Thank you.
Great.
I would say that, I think it was 1980, my brother, I never quite was this accomplished, but my brother was accomplished. And in 1980, he did his Eagle Scout project right next to the ice rink, rehabilitating and cleaning out the pond that was there.
Oh, really? Yeah.
And had, I don't even know if you know this pond there anymore, because it's gone the exact opposite way. But I'll be proud to forward on this project to him, so be proud to know somebody else is doing something there as a steward to the town to improve the facilities at Simsbury Farms. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion effective September 12, 2018, to support the Simsbury Farms Ice Rink Eagle Scout project as presented and accept the donation with our thanks?
So moved. Thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Good luck with your fundraising. Item C is the acceptance of the Community Connectivity Grant. So Simsbury has received a grant for just under $170,000 to make safer six areas where our recreational trails cross over the roads. Given how heavily used our trails are and how busy our roads are, this work's really important. Tom, I noticed you're a little, it's a little hard for you to get out. Is there anything you wanted to add?
I'm just going to say, it's really good to get that kind of money, so. You kind of touched on it. This is following on a grant that actually began from something we applied for in 2016, where the Connecticut Department of Transportation sent out a team to do a safety audit. Following the safety audit, they were kind enough to put out a grant to implement some of the recommendations. We tailored our grant request to follow a lot of what we learned about during the audit process, and I think we were very fortunate to come through with just under $170,000. And really, what the state has been focusing on really kind of ties in line with what we're focusing on, is that a vehicular pedestrian or a vehicular bicycle is one of the worst kind of accidents you could have. There's high injuries, very significant potential for serious injuries or even loss of life. So we want to have our most-used trail crossings be at the highest standard for visibility and ADA accessibility that they can be.
Right. Any questions for Tom?
So the only question, the one on Route 10 north at Quad Hill?
That's the one that's currently set up with the LED lights actually in the pavement.
Right.
Being that that's about 12, almost 14 years old, it's starting to have some issues with maintenance.
Okay. So we're redoing that one?
That's exactly right.
I was going to say, I thought there was one there.
And we're redoing it and going back to a, that was kind of cutting-edge at the time.
Yep.
And sometimes, cutting-edge has its own challenges.
Yep.
We're going to go with a somewhat simpler system that's going to be cheaper in the long term.
Excellent. Yeah, because that's the spot that particularly concerns me. I've seen more near misses there than I care to share. Folks forget that they're supposed to stop when there's moms and dads and kids walking across the road, so.
Yep.
Yeah, that one's very much in need of it.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay. Is there a motion effective September 12, 2018, to accept the Community Connectivity Grant in the amount of $169,764, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Next, our two public gathering permits. The first is related to the fly-in. The fly-in's scheduled for September 23 with a rain date one week. The fly-in's scheduled for September 23rd with a rain date one week later. No significant changes are planned this year over previous years, and we have that application in our packet. I don't know if Maria or Mike wanted to add anything? If there are any questions?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. Robin is here with us this evening. Moving forward, just as a, for informational purposes, with Jerry's retirement, took a look at where the best place was for public gathering permits. I spent some time talking with Robin and Mike about that. So I have reassigned the responsibility for coordinating the public gathering permit process back to the Planning Department. That's actually where it was for quite a long period of time. So many thanks to them for taking on that responsibility. We're also working to improve the application process in form. But again, I think that the permit that was presented was fairly straightforward, so if folks don't have specific questions for Robin, I think.
Questions?
No, we haven't had any plane crashes in a while, so that's good. That actually happened a couple of years ago. They almost took out a whole bunch of people.
Wow. On that note, is there a motion effective September 12th, 2018 to approve the public gathering application for the 2018 Simsbury Fly-In as presented and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. And we have another public gathering permit, this one for the Trinity Church Fall Fair, Terriffill Fall Festival. Since we haven't had a, you know, obviously, this was a last minute ad. Thank you for your diligent work on this. Is there anything substantially different than previous years we should be aware of or is it fairly routine?
It's exactly the same as previous years. I just wanted to point out, and we're kind of going to be leaning towards this, at the very back of that packet is a memo from the, we're actually starting to put conditions of approvals on the public gathering permit, so as each department gets back to me and they sign off, if they have a condition they'd like added in, thank you.
If they have a condition they'd like added in, we're adding it on as an official approval of conditions. So you'll start seeing more and more of that as we're developing our new process. So this does have a couple that came back from a couple different departments, so they're added on there for you.
So we don't have any more camping issues?
There you go. Exactly.
Right. I'm all for camping, by the way. Just not at the park.
Are there any, any questions about this application?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion effective September 12th, 2018 to approve the public gathering application for the 2018 Trinity Church Fair as presented and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank everybody. That's unanimous. Okay, good.
I voted, I said yes.
Got it. Moving on to the proposed water shortage ordinance, Subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen is working on a water shortage ordinance that outlines steps that can be taken in the case of a drought to limit water consumption. In June, we shared the proposed ordinance with Boards and Commissions and other community stakeholders for their feedback. That feedback has been incorporated. We're at a place, if this Board is ready, to schedule a public hearing. Chris Kelly and Mike Payne were part of that Subcommittee, and I didn't know if there was anything that either of you wanted to add.
Yeah, well, first of all, I'll start by saying that we actually started as the temporary Subcommittee on the Water Short ordinance, and that was over a year ago. The only thing I do want to add is subsequent, and really at the point in June, we were really joined significantly by both Maria and town staff. So I just want to acknowledge and thank the involvement of Tom Roy, Mike Liddon, Jeff Shea, Maria, and their involvement really has transformed this to be a much more significant outreach to the community. So what you have in front of you is we did an outreach to about 32 groups in town, as well as a referral to Culture Parks and Recreation, Zoning Commission, as well as Planning Commission. We received feedback from approximately six of those community groups, from the Farmington Valley Health District, from the Hot Metal Country Club, from, indeed, we got it from the Terriffill Water Association, the Fire District, and then we did receive feedback and recommendations from Culture Parks and Recreation, Planning and Zoning. So what you have in front of you incorporates feedback specific to each of those groups to satisfy what their needs were. A couple of significant things you're gonna see was really, you see the language now relative to a Stage 1 water event versus Stage 2, so that language is a little bit clearer. We were asked to be much clearer in terms of roles and responsibilities between town staff, Maria, the Board of Selectmen, to be much clearer in terms of decision-making relative to what gets implemented, and then secondarily, an appeal process, and then also to be using best practices relative to enforcement and appeal. So that's why you will see much clearer language in there relative to both of those, and you'll see more language relative to where, again, town staff and the Board, as well as other individuals would be involved in both of those. So, Mike, that's kind of my general overview of, you know, what you see as different in the ordinance. I don't know if you want to add anything to?
Yeah, I would agree with your comment about the huge value that town staff brought to this, and we had some interesting discussion on a multitude of issues and how all the players and the impact of this would potentially happen, or could potentially happen. And frankly, I found it an interesting discussion because it impacts so many different ways, so many different things. You know, some of the entities actually have water restrictions on them from deep as to what they can and can't do and how it impacts them, and it was interesting. I've learned a lot more than I thought there was to learn on water.
Right. And I would just, the catalyst to this was the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission initially drafted this back in the, towards the end of 2015. They were responding to increasing oversight, awareness, regulation that is emerging from the Department of Environmental Protection, really in relation to droughts and management of water. They were using a model that was put forward by the Department of Environmental Protection and was actually implemented in the town of Greenwich. And so the whole purpose of this is to provide an avenue that if we ever have to respond to a water shortage, to have everything worked out so that we can do that quickly and in a well-organized manner. And so that's really what was the purpose of the ordinance, so. So I'll make a motion, if you need a motion for the hearing, or?
Yeah, just real quick, Chris, are there any other questions anybody has?
Just like a note for the record, that we've used upwards of 130 hours of town staff time on this ordinance. So, once again, illustrating that this has been a colossal waste of town staff time.
Or it illustrates that when you actually have an event, the amount of organization between so many parties involves so much that it's worth having done that beforehand, so.
Potato, potato, yes.
So Chris, the motion?
Yep. So I would move to schedule a public hearing for 6:00 PM at the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting on September 24th, 2018, to solicit public comment regarding the proposed adoption of the water shortage ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to have some discussion on that.
Oh, yes.
I am very concerned about the direction that this ordinance is going. I, in speaking to a number of different people, there are still people that were not aware that this was coming forward. I'm still not sure in all honesty if I support this or don't, but I do feel very strongly that the residents of town should have a public hearing forum to do that. I am extremely concerned about, I'm not quite sure how to describe it, but big government and that. On the other hand, without water, we'll all die. So we need to do that, and personally, that is my challenge. I think I'm going to support this so that the public will have a forum to come in. I'm not sure that I would support going forward with an ordinance, even though I've spent a lot of time with Chris, more time frankly than we ever have before, talking about this and going round and round and town staff those many hours, but I've also learned a lot more about water than I ever thought there was to learn. So that's all.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so the motion carries four to one.
Just for, just for the scouts out there, just, that was a, you're here for a lesson in civics to a certain extent. So it just occurred, was a number of months back, a topic or a subject was identified as somebody needing to address it potentially, which is, should or should we not put in place rules about how much water can be used during a drought? The Board came together, established a working group amongst it, drafted language that talks about that topic. And what we just voted on here was, we have finalized the language of the document, so what we voted on here wasn't to approve the ordinance, but it was to move it forward as a final document for presentation for public audience, so that you all can come back in after reading it and give us comments on whether you like the document, the thoughts, the comments, existence, or not, and we may or may not incorporate those additional comments or thoughts into the final, which will then potentially be voted on to approve or not approve the actual ordinance. So just want you guys to know what just occurred, because there's a little bit of drama there, which we don't get up and get, but it's kind of fun out there.
I'll also add on to that, that you also witnessed a civil disagreement and very proud that we can have that here.
Nobody called each other, nobody any names.
Which is, that's coming.
Like Twitter just went off.
If you didn't like any, if you didn't like anything I just said, I was saying that as Cheryl's seat. If you did like it, I was sitting here.
You do bring up a good point, that we can, we can disagree, and we still move forward, so that's great.
That's right. So this conversation is standing in the way of Mike Liddon's promotion. Ah, so, a recruitment for Director of Planning and Community Development took place over the summer. Mike Liddon emerged as the recommended candidate. So from the Board of Selectmen, Mike Payne and myself participated in the interview process. We also, there were members of all the land use boards also there. Mike Liddon has worked for the town for five years, most recently holding the position of interim Planning Director. Maria, before we, before we're with this, is there anything that you wanted to add about why he emerged as the preferred candidate?
Absolutely. Thank you for that opportunity. So I have prepared some remarks. It is with great enthusiasm that I recommend Mike Liddon as the preferred candidate this evening for the Director of Planning and Community Development position. Mr. Liddon currently is serving as the interim director and has worked for the town since November of 2013. Prior to serving as interim director, he was our assistant town planner. He comes to us with so much land use experience. He worked for the town of West Hartford as a zoning official. He also worked in Waterford as a zoning official before coming here. He holds a bachelor's degree in geography from Central Connecticut State University. He is a certified zoning enforcement official, a certified floodplain manager, one of only a very, very small number in the state of Connecticut, so we are very fortunate to have him with that set of expertise. He is a certified inland wetland agent and a certified aquifer protection area agent. He has been performing the role of interim director since July 9th. During that time, I can say with confidence that he has the ability to lead the department in this new capacity as director. I have found that his knowledge, his skill set, his customer service oriented approach, and his problem-solving abilities are an asset to our community. During the recruitment process, Mike demonstrated a genuine interest in continuing to serve our community and growing professionally with this new role. Should the Board of Selectmen support the recommendation of Mike's appointment as Director of Planning and Community Development this evening, I am confident that he will do an outstanding job in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, is there anything that you wanted to add from the interview process?
Yes, it was very interesting. This is only the second interview that I've sat in on for the town. First was Maria, so.
Two for two.
But, no, seriously, I was really impressed. I didn't know there were so many initials that could go after somebody's name for all these different things, and frankly, some of the things that he brought to the table actually came up at the water ordinance and things that I had not even thought about or frankly, wasn't even aware of. I am really excited about having Mike sit in that seat, so look forward to moving the town forward in a good way.
Hey, thank you.
Take us back to the water ordinance for a minute. Made you afraid, didn't I?
Is there, is there any further discussion?
Just like a be noted for the record, that Mr. Liddon has such a good outreach with the community. I believe there's an appetizer named after him at Antonio's. I've had it, it's excellent. But again, just a small gesture of, that's, that's the kind of community we live in, where town staff is part of the community, not just folks that work here. So I think that's a funny, but a great representation of how this community works, so.
Any other discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to make a conditional offer of employment to Michael and Liddon for the position of Director of Planning and Community Development and to appoint Mr. Liddon to the position retroactive to Monday, September 10th, 2018, with an annual starting salary of $112,500 and employment-related benefits assigned to that position?
I would enthusiastically make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Mike, congratulations. Mike, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you guys for joining us tonight. Good job. Good job. It's a personal. Clear or well. It's okay.
Thanks, guys.
Joan, it's all for you.
I know that my zip code is different where I live, where I work. I really do this, now I've been here for, it'll be five years in November, and I, it just, you know, feels like a second home. And I really, it's a community that's grown on me, definitely from the first six months that I was here, and I look forward to some of the challenges. We have some challenges that we have to work with. We're really looking as a department of moving forward and building relationships and definitely get more of a friendly environment for both commissions, business owners, developers, et cetera, so that it's more open. And just, once again, just honored and thank you. I should say one thing, though. Hi, Eleanor. My five-year-old was allowed to stay up till six. So I have to say hello to Eleanor, but thank you so much.
That's great. Thank you, Mike. I would have moved you up in the agenda if I knew. Okay, moving on to appointments and resignations. Is there a motion effective September 12th, 2018 to appoint Susan Messino as a member of the Open Space Committee with the term expiring December 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
And I would just like a note that Mr. Kelly did an outstanding job organizing the open space interviews.
Well, I wanted to thank both of you.
Yeah, but Chris gets the credit. He is the organized one of the two of us and made sure that all the unaffiliated folks got a good opportunity to come in, and I always enjoy, as I know Chris does, a meeting, meeting the unaffiliated folks to, and never an easy decision, because we always have so many qualified individuals in this town. It's a, it's a great reminder, and one of the best things I think we get to do is talk to folks that just want to volunteer their time, and that the resumes that they bring with them, the experience they bring with them is outstanding. We're very lucky.
Yeah, absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Is there a motion to accept with our thanks the resignation of Andrea Penta as a regular member of the Recycling Committee, retroactive to August 11th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Is there a motion to accept with our thanks the resignation of Richard Wagner as a regular member of the Tourism Committee, retroactive to August 20th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously as well. Are there any changes that anyone would propose to the minutes from last month? Okay, then those stand.
Do you guys miss Chris and I?
Say that again?
Did you miss Chris and I?
Very much so.
Yeah.
Yeah. The meeting went really quickly, I wonder why?
You know, we ran into each other in airports.
Did you?
Yes. So I was truly away on vacation. I wasn't dodging you guys. I was working. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm glad you can corroborate each other's story. Moving on to Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports, is there anything anyone wanted to bring up?
Public safety meeting next Thursday. Just want to remind folks that that is open to the public despite the early hour. It's a, we're, at the town manager's request, we're gonna look and make sure that time is the one that makes sense. But again, if folks from the public do have an interest in participating or have an issue, myself, email me, town manager, Eric, any one of us, and we can make sure to either A) get it on the agenda, or B) set a special meeting so that if that time doesn't work for folks, we certainly do want public input from a public safety standpoint.
Absolutely. Anything else under Subcommittee Reports, Liaison Reports? Okay. Excuse me. Anything anyone wanted to bring up under Communications? The only thing I wanted to add is my congratulations to our Finance Department and all who are involved in putting together our town's comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFER. It's a really important document, not light reading, but it received the Certificate of Achievement, which is the highest form of recognition in government accounting, so we should be really proud of that. Congratulations. That's, I think that's all we've got. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second, Chris?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Taking my motion.
Are we okay to go to Maria's office for a few minutes?
Quickly.
Okay.